So welcome back to another week of study session where new beginners, aspirants, initiates can come together to study together, have conversations just in general about the comedic legacy. About this system that we are trying to live by in the 21st century. So we're going to continue on this week with our same old handy dandy book. So we are currently reading Egyptian Egypt and Black Africa by Theophile Obenga. And so far we have read chapters one and I believe we're still in chapter two. Yes, we are. So our goal for today hopefully is to finish at least chapter two today. So um let's get started. So um we are on page sixty seven. Greeks in the Nile Valley or the Happy Valley itinerary and cost of the journey. So Greeks from everywhere Ionans, Karians of Asia Minor from a Cyrene Greeks, excuse me. You like kept feeling that sorry about that. Greeks of the islands and the mainland went through the whole of Kemmit land of ancient civilization and all of. I'm sorry and of a prodigious fertility under the pharaohs of the twenty sixth dynasty six sixty four to five twenty five BCE. Oh, so much so that some of them were even buried there. During this particular dynasty, Kemmit experienced a wonderful political, intellectual, artistic, and religious Renaissance. The court and the administration were reconstituted after the expulsion of the Assyrians and the Ethiopians or Nubians of the twenty fifth dynasty and the Demotic writing appeared. All the big cities were distinguished by the religious buildings. I'm gonna add everybody. I'm like, let me say hi, let me say hello, 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 hello. I'm like, will it let me wave? Okay, let finally let me wave at somebody. Kemmit was then trading with the Greeks. See, I'm not sure how to pronounce this Naucratis. N A U C R A T I S. On the Canopic branch of the Happy near Saes. Was a Greek commercial trading post founded by the Malesians at the time of Semiticus, the first seventh century BCE. The influence of, excuse me. Now I lost my place. So the influence was not to be eclipsed by that of Alexandria founded in three twenty two BCE. By Alexander or Alexander the Great, great as we've, you know, learned him in school. So King Amasis was even more favorable to the Greeks who established themselves elsewhere at Memphis, at Abdios. On the Great Oasis, Herodotus reported this friend of the Greeks. Amasis gave some of them tokens of his benevolence. Amasis concluded friendships and alliances with Cyrenians. Amasis always, I'm sorry, also consecrated offerings in Greek countries in Cyrene, Lisbo, Samos, Hera. He was the first in the world, that is, the first comedic person to seize the island of Cyprus and force it to pay tribute according to Herodotus in the Histories Book Two. I feel like I should get some water. We'll see. We'll see if that's necessary. So he did that in the valley of the Happy or the Nile River Valley at this period. Instruction was widespread in the country. Each big city had one or more schools which were attached to temples in which were powerful and venerable colleges of priests which were established hierarchies. Saes, Baobas, Tanis, Heliopolis, Memphis, Hermopolis, Abdios, and Thebes had great scholars and scientists who could not do without making use of the ancient libraries. For example, the library of the temple of Horus at Edfu, the library of Tabunis at Fayum. Including numerous literary texts, religious or scientific treaties, the private libraries of Thebes. The one in Del Air Medina, the Chester Betty Collection, which included magical texts, popular mythological tales, Psalms, literary and medical texts. The priestly college of Heliopolis had a universal reputation. Thebes of a hundred doors or Homer was the most cosmopolitan town in the Mediterranean antiquity. To travel to Kemmit, the Greek traders, students, tourists, mercenaries, and adventurers inevitably use one or the other of these routes. So just as like a note, one of the reasons why I am very much, I don't want to say against. But you know, when you use all of these kinds of terms, especially nowadays, it's like people don't really know what that means. So um in general, it's just this idea of like. You know, I kind of wish he would use the indigenous names instead of like the Greek names. But that's just my two cents. So so the first route is the eastern route. The second one is the western. So essentially he just gets into talking about how expensive one was over the other. And he's converting it into francs and stuff like that. So. So the relations between Greece and Kemmit were not legendary but real. On the contrary, they were easy and numerous and lasted centuries. This eventually created a high opinion of Kemmit in the Greek collective mentality. But this Egyptian mirage which always haunted the Greek spirit was justified by the fact that Kemmit was a country of literature, art, science, philosophy, millennia before the birth of intellectual life in Greece. And it is not surprising that Greece should owe Kemmit its first scientists and philosophers. Kemmit thought, or I'm sorry, comedic thought had formed the basis for Greek thought. Just as today, North American science and technology dominate and fascinate the entire world. It is simply a matter of the overwhelming superiority of the US with an exclamation point. Hmm, that's an interesting. I mean, I understand what he's saying. It's just. That's an interesting conversation starter in twenty twenty one. The antiquity during the period we are discussing, the scientific supremacy of Kemmit and had no equivalence in Greece. And the Greeks had no ethnic. Yeah, ethnic, I made sure I said that right. Complex about going and learning in the Happy Valley under the authority of the learned comedic priests. Since the prestigious comedic civilization is owing to the black Africans who then lived in the Nile Valley, responsible from the start to finish of pharaonic civilization, then modern Eurocentric teaching of ancient history and the history of ideas seems to ignore all of these truths to dismiss the testimonies of the Greeks themselves, not without historic falsification. The historical consciousness of mankind stated Professor Shikant Antidio. Is still, I'm sorry, quote, is still suffering from these voluntary distortions of history. One must react against this here and now for a truthful presentation of cultural evolution of humanity. Which that makes sense. I think that's what a lot of people are talking about, especially now. And I know I'm gonna just say this and you know, feel free to comment if y'all want to comment. But that whole idea of um what is that thing that everybody was arguing a couple months ago? Something racial theory or something like that. And um I honestly wish I could remember, but I can't. And um I think it's the same kind of concept, this idea that you know, we want to be a lot more truthful, honest, and setting the record straight across the board. Just because history in general, and it still is kind of being manipulated and so on and so forth. But then again, it always does. There was a documentary that I was watching where they were saying that it was one like really historic battle that Ramsu or Ramses like supposedly fought in and stuff like that, but they say like there's more and more historical records saying that like that really didn't happen that way, but he came back and told everybody it was. And so they built like all these monuments and stuff. So it ended up really being, or they believe it to be. Not that he didn't fight at all, but just the grand battle that he, you know, had himself painted on the walls as doing wasn't necessarily the case. And that's from, if you corroborate. I forget who it was, but it was somebody in like the Israelish area. And because apparently he was like fighting on different, a whole bunch of different sides at that time. And like it was like corroborating evidence that's like, yeah, he we fought, but it wasn't like a mass slaughter on his behalf kind of a thing like they they put up a good fight kind of a thing. But then again, if you fought in a war, you wouldn't want to say, yeah, they beat us like punks either. So I mean, you could see it both ways. But either way, point of the matter is we want to be a little more historically accurate as possible. And I want to say even potentially a little more neutral. You know, and I it's, everybody has their biases and biases. But you know, just in general, to try to look at things a little more neutrally. Instead of having, you know, so much emotional attachment to every single thing. Because I just don't think that's healthy, honestly. So what the Greeks learned in the Happy Valley? One must definitely abandon the preposterous, oh, okay. The preposterous idea according to which pharaonic Kemmit instead of science only knew empirical recipes objectively. It is difficult to conceive that the Greeks who went to the Happy Valley to learn and satisfy the intellectual curiosity with comedic priests should have done so only to be initiated to empirical recipes. To think so is to give proof of a seriously uninformed judgment. Actually, by going to the Happy Valley for training, the Greeks were initiated into real scientific and philosophical knowledge. I think that's very interesting and I wonder if that's a thought that people actually have nowadays. Like I really wonder if contemporarily, we, we as human beings, not necessarily one group over another. But do we, do people still think that? That the Greeks went there and and they just learned a whole bunch of spookism? Like is that, is that what people think? I think that's, I feel like that's an antiquated idea, but I, you know, I'm not sure. So feel free to chime in and let me know like, is that really still something that people think? Or have we kind of evolved in our thinking? One metaphysics and philosophy. So the commit you were the first to state doctrine of immortality of a person's soul. Says Herodotus and he cites, it says Roman numeral two, one, two, three. So this is correct. From the earliest time of their history, the commit you had clearly stated that something of man, his double ka, his soul or ba, survived the death of the body. This belief in immortality of the human soul is typically, yeah, typically comedic. Well before the religions of the Near East, the theme of judgment of the dead is also comedic in origin. They're referring to origin of philosophy. Diogenes Laeteris, third century CE. In his precious work, Life Doctrines, Maxims of Renowned Philosophers, sums up comedic philosophy in in the introduction. There is the first principle matter, then the four elements become dissociated. Then living beings were formed. The sun, the moon are gods. Nature. One was called Asar, the other was Aset. They thought that the world had a beginning and it would have an end. That it was spherical and the stars were made of fire. And their heat gave birth to everything on the surface of the earth. That the soul was eternal, that rain came from transformation of air. This is accurate. The Egyptian noon is indeed the first principle of comedic philosophy. And this first principle is matter, a liquid, fluid ether. The four elements, water, earth, fire, air were identified by comedic priests who made them constituent elements in the advent and evolution of the universe millennia before the birth of Thales, the founder of Greek philosophy. To imagine that the world should be spherical and that stars should be made of fire and the heat of the sun gave life to everything on earth. And that the rain came from the air and the clouds condensing the evaporated water. The air is gas which forms an atmosphere and contains vapor. This is not ordinary and quite clearly separates itself from the non-scientific knowledge of then public opinion. So the mysteries were an immense part of comedic knowledge. Mystery of life and death, mystery of the power of numbers, mystery of the beyond, mystery of the nature, mystery of the human spirit. Do not revel the rituals that you see in every mystery in the temples. And that is quoted from Emil Chessant, Les Temples d'Edfu. Cairo printed in nineteen fifty eight, page three sixty one, line seven. He is so thorough. I love that part. That's the part I really love. And it is accepted that, and it is accepted that the taste for mystery of Pythagoras and Pythagoreans comes directly from Kemmit. So I think the one thing that's really interesting about this is just the in general idea of just using science and understanding science, religion, spirituality is just all one in the same. And I think that's one thing and I know I've mentioned this before, but it's like, that's one of the reasons why I really much gravitated towards like the comedic understanding of the universe is because yes, it's mythos and yes, it has to do with nature and gods and all this other stuff. But like it was all kind of one and even within Christianity, like the whole purpose of science was to prove the existence or better explain the existence of God. So it's just kind of like that, that kind of way of thinking. But you know, just nowadays we put them like they're two opposite things and it's just so weird that people do that. I honestly wonder why people do that because it just doesn't make sense to me. And I think maybe it has to do with like how it's presented perhaps to people like it has to be one or the other, but it really doesn't. Okay, so metaphysics and philosophy. The commit you, oh, no, I read that. Ha, ha, ha. Astronomy. So the obliqueness of eclipse, yeah, ecliptic on the equator. That isn't like if that's not a tongue twister, the obliqueness of the eclipse. No, the ecliptic on the equator. See, I can't even read it slow, let alone read it super fast. So onopides, O E N O P I D E S of Chios learned from the commit you the knowledge of the orbit of the sun, which because of its oblique course moves in an opposite direction to the other stars. And that he's referencing Herodotus. So he's basically saying how all these Greeks are citing comedic stuff. So he, you know, like how I, how I said he did before, like he just kind of this Greek guy from this place and this Greek guy who lived at this time from this place. He's just listening to a whole bunch of folks. So they clearly affirm the important astronomical discoveries that they got from the commit to you about the sun. Ah, okay, here's something that actually is something I want to read. So the ecliptic is the great circle of the celestial sphere described in one year by the sun in its own apparent movement according to the commit to you and dogon astronomy. Indeed, the dogon of Mali, West Africa know how to determine mathematically and geographically. Sorry, I was gonna say geographically, graphically, the positions of the sun on the ecliptic. See Dominique Zen et tout sur la cosmology du. I'm like reading it super American. I'm supposed to try to put accent on. I'm not. De dogon et de bambara du Sudan français. So studies of the cosmology of the dogon. And the, I don't know what bambara, but bambara of the Sudan. Or the French Sudanese, I assume that means. So. Yeah. And apparently that's a book that was published in nineteen fifty one. Oh, no, it's a journal. My bad. Volume eleven, January nineteen fifty one, issue number one, pages thirteen to twenty three. Go me. Alright, so eclipses or comets. Comedic astronomy could observe with great exactitude the eclipse of the sun and the moon and calculate them in advance. In order to predict in great detail, not detail and infallibility, these kinds of phenomena. This text of exemplary precision shows that the encounters of the sun and the moon were known to the commiting scientists who could calculate them in advance. The astronomer priest certainly taught Thales who predicted the eclipse of the sun in five eighty five BCE. A method to calculate eclipses. I think what's really interesting about this just to, I guess, butt in is the idea that we have this notion. And I definitely feel like it comes from social, not, not social media, but maybe just movies. That like when ancient people saw an eclipse, they were like, oh my God. And like, they just went and panicked and stabbed people in the face and just like lost it, just totally lost it. And it's just funny to me like that's the impression, you know, from movies and stuff that we get like, especially because. Oh my gosh, and you, y'all know I hate to reference like biblical stories. But it's like when you had, oh my gosh, why am I not right remembering the right name? I want to say Noah and it's not Noah. Moses. And when they had all the plagues and one of the signs was like an eclipse or blotting out, you know, blotting out the sun. And I just think that's interesting where it's just like, huh. Like as the, I'm like, what group of people did they come from again? Lord have mercy. The the Israel, Israelites. Feel free to correct me, but like if the commit to you of that time period already mapped it out and already knew like that part of the mythos already kind of just tells me about that group of people that they weren't on it like that. Or maybe they didn't have that understanding or that education or something. Because I mean, I could see like, okay, the locusts and they kill stuff and the blood and the water and like all of those things. I'm like, yeah, I got you, got you, got you. But that one. Because if it's a, if it's a group that understands astronomy, that wouldn't necessarily be bad. You know what I mean? Is that making sense? I don't know. But that's what it got me to thinking anyways. It's just the idea like that, well, if they could calculate it, then they wouldn't have any fear or they wouldn't have any kind of, yeah, Israelite, thank you. And I'm wondering now, like it kind of just because I feel like I'm nosy, I'm wondering like, you know, I know according to the story that they were in slavery and this, that, and the third, but I wonder historically. You know, like scholarly, where they were. And like what kinds of things they were doing within their society. But yes, that's my thought. That's just my random thought. So the course of the stars and the planets, the course of the stars and the planets was also a preoccupation of the commit to you. Four thousand years ago, the commit you knew that the earth moved in space and they did not fear to attribute the knowledge of this astronomical fact to the generations who had preceded them centuries ago. So apparently it's some Egyptologist by the name of F. Chabas, C H A B A S. It's a text on the Egyptian belief of movement of the earth. So one text Egyptian relative au movement de la terre. Paris nineteen oh three volume eleven pages, one to three and page twelve. I think the thing that again, like I'm getting out of this, I'm like nineteen oh three, nineteen fifty nine, nineteen fifty one. Where's this other one? Nineteen twenty eight. And it's like, here we are. You know, modern practitioners and we're just like, oh, we're trying to get it in twenty twenty one. Like I know I've gotten into an argument with a lady and she's just like, well, we couldn't know that because it was all lost. And I'm like, but these people have been studying it since the mid eighteen hundreds, like we do know a little something. No. No, they couldn't possibly know. It's like, no, people have been studying this for a long time. Like we're just late to the party kind of a thing, but I digress. I'm getting off topic here. So the origin of lunar light, a late Egyptian text can be read as follows. God moon, light of the night, image of Amen's left eye, which raises in the east while Amen, the sun is in the west. Thebes is inundated by its brilliance, for the left eye receives the light of the right eye. This text is essential. The sun and moon are defined as the two eyes of the sky. When the sun disappears from the eyes of the living, then the moon takes over. But the lunar light is owed to the right eye, that is, the sun. This is a scientific explanation of lunar light. Oh, that's interesting. And it is true because we only see the moon because the light comes from the sun and shines on it. Yo, it was so smart. Like they knew stuff like now I'm like, oh yeah, that makes sense, but imagine if we never took science class and be like, oh my God, that's amazing. Why was I like Italian for that? I don't know. Forgive me. This cousin from Jersey. Anyway, so the astronomical calendar. In antiquity, the Egyptian civil calendar was the only calendar to be based on astronomy. This calendar is the very foundation of our present calendar. So Calmaceous. C A L L I M A C H U S, Calmae. Poet and Romarian of Alexandria, born in Cyrene circa three ten to two thirty five BCE. Thought that fails was the first to make the calendar and he had taught sailors to be led by the great bear. This scholar from Alexandria simply forgot that Thales received his scientific education in Kemmit. And I'm like, did he forget? Did he actually forget? Because we could either say he purposely didn't do it, or we could say he was ignorant, but forgetting? I don't know. I don't know. But then again, not everybody credits. You know what I mean? It's not like, like if we think about like, look at social media and how big TikTok is like, you never hear TikTok going like, oh, well, thanks to Vine, like nobody, honestly, like when people are on the comet, they, they really don't reference like the people who came before them. Like I think that's a human thing, but whatever. This scholar, oh, I just said that, received a scientific education in Kemmit. Where the annual calendar of three hundred and sixty five days had been known as early as forty two hundred BCE. And where the great bear, AKA Ursam Major, a constellation in the northern hemisphere was well and truly identified by the commit to you who called it Mes. Meshkatu. Okay. I'm gonna say alrighty then. So three medicine. The first treaties on cardiology. So the Everest Papariss. You know, I've heard so much about the Everest Papariss, like I'm at the point where I feel like I would like to buy it. At least eventually. Just because now I feel like, whoa, I'm just nosy. So the Everest Papariss dates from the ninth year in the reign of Amenophis the first, which I'm like, that's totally Greek. They did not, I'm an office, Mr. Holland's opus. I can't. Alright, so. I can't, alright, so he was from fifteen fifty seven to fifteen thirty BCE. And uh the Evers Paparus contains theoretical reflections on the problem of life and health. Paragraph eight hundred and fifty four A states the. Anatomy and physiology of the heart showing precisely that commit to you had a clear notion of. Uh arterial. Oh my gosh, why does he want me to just stumble? Vascula vascularization. I'm saying it wrong, but I'm saying it right at the same time. Vascularization, yeah. I like, I'm I'm like, I'm like so proud of myself when I get it wrong, but I'll be. And the whole circulatory system, uh comedic doctors could take the pulse in a precise and general manner. Uh cardiac pathology also had naturally attracted the attention of comedic doctors. Paragraph eight fifty five of the Evers Paparus notes the state of cardiac deficiency. And it's uh hectic and pulmonary repercussions. The circulation of the blood from the heart to the periphery was also known to the commit to you. Uh, the first treaties on general and bone surgery of mankind is in the Edwin Smith Paparus, which dates. Uh from the beginning of the eighteenth dynasty, so fifteen sixty seven BCE, the Book of Wounds. Contains a study of forty eight surgical cases of wounds and lesions from head to toe. Following a most rigorous method, formal name or informal name. Of the complaint under discussion, examination or observation, diagnosis, prognosis and treatment. The surgeons in ancient Kemet were able to establish anatomical links between the effects of the central system. And the peripheral effects, the uh thence identifying the unity of uh. Innovation between central and peripheral nerves. And it's not innovation, it's innervation. So we know. Uh, the comedic practice dissection. The identification of master muscle, which goes from the external angle of the lower jaw. Up to the temporal bone uh by comedic surgeons is proof that they practiced dissecting folks, so. I guess, so. Well, I mean, not even that, I assume also that like if they were doing surgeries. As they were cutting, they probably saw like, you know, different stuff too. So the aphasia of comprehension of expression. So the aphasia of Wernicke. W E R N I C K E, uh German neurologist and that of Broca, French surgeon and anthropologist. Were known to the ancient Egyptians as of the Edwin Smith Paparus case twenty two. So um. He said, goes on to say Homer shamelessly praised Kemet. As a country where the doctors are the fine sign. Are the first scientists of the world. The most learned doctors in the world in antiquity were found in Kemet where um Hippocrates. Uh four sixty BCE to three seventy seven BCE and Galen. Uh one thirty one to two zero one BCE had consulted comedic medical works in the temple of Imhotep in Memphis. Mennefer. AKA Memphis. Alright, so mathematics, I'm like. Sir, how much longer? How much longer you gonna make me read all this? Now I'm southern, first of us Italian, now I'm southern. I have a feeling I see how this is gonna go down, so let's at least finish this part. So Egyptian mathematics form homogeneous, harmonious and complete whole. In spite of its pragmatic empirical and concrete applications, the pragmatic appearance of the. Uh. Of the comedic calculus. Reveals the absolute intellectual competence of mathematical thought Leon Bushvick. Le etape de la fil- philosophy mathematique. Okay, that's like the same thing and that came out in nineteen forty seven, page thirty two. There are therefore um. Arithmetic. Arithmetical, haha, got it. Arithmetical rules beyond the calculations of the comedic mathematical paparai. The operations are themselves similar because there are rules and the rules are coordinated be. Because they are part of an organized rational arithmetic. Whole numbers, even odd primary numbers, fractions of one of two of any number fractional. Expressions and numbers, squares, powers, square roots, addition, subtraction. With a search for the reminder. Remainder. Multiplication and division under multiple forms, proportions, progressions, etc. Everything is there. And is treated in such a way that modern critics have nothing to add. And that comes from Gillian La Science Egyptian. It's something about this word arithmetic. Le arithmetic O moyenne Empire. I'm like, if I'm not mistaken, moyenne ha- isn't that a cult? I think that means brown. So yeah, the Egyptian science of arithmetic. Of the says moyenne empire, I'm gonna just leave it at that. And that's from nineteen twenty seven. So Egypt uh Egyptian mathematicians, AKA comedic mathematicians could calculate the area of the square. The rectangle, the triangle, the trapezium, the circle, the flying trapeze. With a good approp- approximation of pi, the hemisphere. They could also precisely calculate the volume of a cube prism and circular cylinder. The pyramid and the truncated square based pyramid. Let's. Let us take for an example, problem forty one from the Rhine Paparus. It deals with volume shop of a circular. Cylinder diameter nine height ten, the Devon. Revolve cylinder, right circular cylinder is a solid figure created by the rotation of a rectangle around one of its sides. The two sir, I'm like, okay. A can of soup, gotcha. I swear sometimes they just maybe and the second it looks like this and then this because the rectangle was doing it, it looked like a can of soup. That's it. That's what he tried to say, look like a candy. Alright. So the two circles created are equal. These are the basis of the distance between the height of the cylinder, therefore the volume of the cylinder is equal to the area of the circle. This is why I teach social studies, I sit in here like math, 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 math. Don't get me wrong, I appreciate it, but dang. I'm sitting here about to go like. I'm like, no, please, no. Alright, so he go, he just keep talking about math and they was real smart, so if y'all wanna read that, that's page seventy six. He goes on, look, oh my god. I'mma just do the Cliff Notes of this one, so page seventy six to page seventy, the beginning of seventy nine, I'm doing Cliff Notes, I'm not gonna read all this. So he goes on and talks about this whole big math problem, so yay, they was smart, okay, I'm about to sit here and read all this math. They did the maths, they was good at it clearly. For thousands of years, we got it, check. Alright, so there were plenty, there was plenty to teach up, he back to the Greeks, so basically they wrote. A whole bunch of stuff and he. Herodotus and Aristotle and all of that, what is this guy's name? Oh, Herodotus of Halicarnassus. Okay. So all these Greek people came and was like, oh snap, y'all is so smart, let us learn math from you and that's it, boom. Cliff notes. The modern electronic calculator and the comedic scribe, I ain't gonna read this one cuz that's kinda that that caught me. Uh, so the Rhine Paparus states with the table, oh, hot psych, I lied, he gets into explaining more maths. Some with fractions and numerator of one and uneven values of A between one and a hundred. Alright, yeah, they were smart, they did algebra and stuff, cool, got you, okay. Uh, go check out the Rhine Paparus to get more of that information. So, but basically they were really good at calculating stuff. Uh, these are the few facts in math medicine astronomy meta fix it uh metaphysics. Um, which were part of the immense scientific, cultural, spiritual treasures accumulated by the commit to you for almost. Thirty centuries of living history. So in a matter of civilization, the ancient committee you did not imitate um any other people in antiquity in antiquity. Antiquity. They themselves invented their writing, their monumental architecture, their literature, math, astronomy, math, religion, concept of the world. Arts. And he lists a whole bunch of types of arts. Uh, the Egyptian ele- uh, the comedic intellectual experiences. Were used for the progress of other people in antiquity in the glorious path of human civilization. Phoenicians, Hebrews, Greeks, Cretians. Romans, etcetera benefited from the positive experience of ancient Kemet and all those of Babylonia. How, why would he do that? Why would he do that? Cause now it it's it's like that, the end of that sentence left questions. Because you talked about all these other Greek people, I mean, all these other non comedic people and how they all got it. From them and then you just tag on and Babylonia, like wait, what? You're not gonna make that. Sir, how you do that? You explained all this other stuff. I'm like, let me skim real quick, I'm like, he didn't say nothing about no Babylonia. He surely did not, so where, where, bro, where you get that from? Where though, I can't anyways, Mr. Obenga. Now, now we all know I wouldn't be saying this in person. So one can closely examine the influence of Kemet, uh though upon the. Uh birth of Greek thought, particularly since Kemet in the eyes of all the Greeks. Was then considered the most civilized country in the world. I'm still mad he said Kemet was like America. Kemet was America. Where we got guns and and fireworks. I'm done, I'm doing too much today, I need to be quiet. Alright. So, oh, now he back on fails again, like we were, this is two chapters of this guy. So. Basically what he's saying is there was this school, the Ionian School. Um, that was created. And uh in around six hundred BCE. And essentially that's where the Europeans AKA at that time period, the Greeks. And the people kinda surrounding that area, they would go over there to go to school and then he says it's a dope school. Uh, but it pales in comparison. Um, and that comes from Moses I Finley. I can't say that. It got one of them double dots on the I, I'm like, I don't even know how I'm supposed to pronounce that. But. The first book of Greece about the Bronze Age and the. Archaic epoch. I think I translated that correctly, who knows? Nineteen eighty pages nineteen sixty six, I be getting caught up on so many little details that only I get caught up on, so I apologize for that. When I do that because. I don't know, but anyway, so he goes on, he says Thales was the first uh Greek person to be called the sage. And he was called that by some of these other people from Athens. And then he basically highlights how he goes down into Kemet and learns stuff. So the most ancient representative of Greek philosophy. Since Aristotle affirms that fail is the founder of natural philosophy metaphysics book. One, chapter three and because he's a former pupil of the commit to you. Swear he said this like fifty million times already, but here we go, reading it again. Uh, he says the primary elementary principle was water, he placed water at the origin of everything. Thales boldly affirms that unity of matter which defining matter is the simplest form, water principle of things. Of beings of total existing reality, yada, 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 yada. I swear. I know, I know you gotta really like put it in there, but sheesh. Talking about beating a dead horse. See, look, and it's so funny cuz I thought that to myself too, I was like, he probably gonna start talking about the noon again and. And like the creation story and then I'm skimming, I'm skimming through this. And it says the Egyptian noon is the basis of the system of the physics in Kemet, then he goes on, talks about newt and geb. Asaurus, I'm like. Now, if y'all been here, y'all who know. We read this like at least two, three weeks ago. Hence why I'm like skip, let's skip it. So rise the color, yeah, he's the middle man in the noon, matter of fact, the noon is the principle of unity. Of matter and water and what, yeah, we really, really read this. Okay, so. Let us reiterate the facts and then hopefully we'll get off this this pony. Uh, let us reiterate these important facts, ancient pharaonic Kemet noon is the primordial water, Coptic it is. Noon uh abyss or abyssal water. And southern Sudan. Now or or nu- noon water. Okay, so. Language references. Ah, one can therefore, this is, this is a good little piece right here. Uh, one can therefore gather that the native context of pharaonic philosophy is well and truly an African. Egypto-Nubian context, furthermore. The pharaonic metaphysical notions of Ka and Ba can be found in whole of black Africa from. Kemet fails, uh, why are we, why? Yo, he literally says that. Bomb couple of sentences and then goes straight back to Greece. Why? It was such an opening, why would you do that? Anyway. Let's get back to it, sorry. Uh, fails also learned that the notion of mobility of the human soul fails was the first to show the soul as a constantly changing. Or self-changing nature is always mobile or automobile. I think that's not impressive to me just because I'm living now and not back then. Yo, I'm I'm kinda mad at that. Like I'm I'm kinda searching to see like, does he? It's like he don't even go back to that. Says according to the commit to you, man was composed of various spiritual forces, Ka, the vital force. An immortal effesh uh efficacious principle. Ba, the spiritual part of the individual which um. Recovers its autonomy after death and can move at its liking, ren, the name. Which is something living and always has meaning, that's when they say like. Or if you've ever watched that movie Coco. And um the one guy kinda just disappears and it's this idea that you don't have any ancestors, you don't have, like there are. Monuments, it's still, I don't know, maybe they're either still in Kemet cuz you know now we had the Arab Spring, so I don't, I don't know what would be there right now. But I do know that they had it where like. You know how in modern times when we wanna remember people and people like build a bench or something or like. Uh, we build a new like park and they sell those bricks with people's names on them and stuff. So it's like the same idea, whereas back then they would like build an. Outside altar with like a fountain and the inscription would be like. Um, like pour some water and and like say a prayer and it would have the person's name. So the whole point of this is even if like the family. Some happens to them and they can't do like their ancestral work and all that other stuff that like publicly. That person could still be remembered and like when we think of all the um. All the the temple writings and stuff like that, uh when it like mentions people's name like. It's so that we could keep doing that, so I just, I don't know, but anyway, I thought that was. Little cool, I'm like comeback. The Ba, the Egyptian soul is not opposed to the body. As in the Christian religion, for instance, let me say that again. The Ba, the Egyptian soul is not opposed, I got it now. To the quote body as in Christian religion, for instance, the comedic Ba. Is of a changing or self-changing nature. A power which is an integrated part of the manifestation of the dead, your Ba is yours. a power which is an integrated part of the manifestation of the dead your Ba is yours in you your power is yours around you oh snacks and he's quoting the pyramid text boom um I assume that's chapter four twenty two that you can find that note to self so um I don't know I just keep going back I don't like the fact that he really made that connection up at the beginning about the philosophy and how it's Egypto Nubian and then just like he got all this other evidence for other stuff and then that is kinda like I'm concentrating more on the Nubian clearly cuz I I know we just read that but I'm like I'm a little sad about that uh now he's back to talking about fails now he's back to talking about Herodotus and Plato in Plato's philosophy the quote soul is a pure spiritual prin- principle truly distinct from the body and immortal in Aristotle's philosophy the soul forms a union with the body as a shape forms a union with matter but it's spiritu- yeah it's spiritual uh but it's spirituality and immortality are less obvious the term immortality only appears uh for the first time in the Old Testament in the Book of Wisdom or the Wisdom of Solomon a work written in Greek around fifty BC the idea of immortality of the soul suggested in the Book of Wisdom it says three four so chapter three verse four I think uh is Greek in fact the Hebrewic napes the self or the soul goes as far as death but does not survive as a living being the immortality of the soul as it is mentioned in the Book of Wisdom is a product of the Judaism of Alexandria that is interesting but I also know that they said sorry sorry about that that they say um they do say that the library at Alexandria like it was already uh how do you say it was already at a time period um of the the late later di- uh dynasties where it was already very very Greek and overrun you know so so that all the people of power were of Greek uh lineage uh whether it be that they're mixed or whether that they be like first generation or whatever but the super cool thing about the fact that they're saying the the Hebrew got influenced is because as I was researching or reading about something else that it did say that there were like that Jewish people at the time period in Kemet cuz I think it was talking about like religious freedom or whatever and it was saying that like they had their whole like area where they pretty much like ran it and it they could go according to their own culture and custom and stuff like that they still kinda were under the nasut but it but they were like doing their own religious thing and um they were actually saying like because Rome coming in and then persecuting like Jewish people or Christian people you know cuz they weren't Christians yet but persecuting them that like it makes sense that you know that that's in that mix because there was a significant Jewish population in Alexandria and since you had the library at Alexandria and you had all these people going in and out of there that makes sense like now y'all are like listening to all my inner thinking um yeah okay so now he's just back to doing this ahaha here we go okay this fundamental notion of Egyptian philosophy is widespread in black Africa as we can verify as follows oh I see how he so he's tying it as in we know it because of like language connections so that's what that's supposed to be even though it's like really small uh so pharaonic Egyptian Ba spirit or soul Coptic is Baii spirit or soul Mobichi from the Congo say Ba to to be sounded spirit or to be spiritually aware the Ranga of Mozambique says Ba or Kubba to be sound in spirit the Mengeb Geb two Mangeb two uh they say the Obu to be to exist or to have one soul the Sanghai of the Niger say B or soul the du- the being a beings double oh that's an interesting explanation uh Bambara of Mali say B BE or BI to be to exist to have one soul or uh one spirit and then he goes on and he says Greek psyche Senuma spirit or soul Hebrew napes soul or self uh Syriac Naps I don't even know Napsa that means soul Arabic Nafs soul and Ethiopian Nafs soul so it is obvious that there are distinctive world culture the black African world from the time of pharaonic Egypt Ba Baii Bi Bi Bu etcetera the Semitic world Nepse Nepsa Nafs etcetera and the Indo-European world nume- Numia psyche uh Vedic Sanskrit Su uh meaning breath strength Apsu breathless or weak all these cultural worlds are very clear in uh designating notions as important as a soul vital force life immaterial and immortal parts of the being the soul of the living being and the seat of its thoughts emotions and desires so pharaonic philosophy is inseparable from its native continental context i.e. the black African world there's no single fundamental notion of pharaonic philosophy that is not to be found in black Africa uh fails also imported geometry to Greece Herodotus thinks land measuring triggered off the invention of geometry in Kemet which Greeks such as Thales later brought back to their country okay the historian of Greek mathematics Sir Thomas L Heath thinks that fails formulated the preposition any diameter cuts the circle in two after having seen the circles divided in equal sectors which can be found on Egyptian monuments or comedic monuments and then he gives the book so to sum it up and to simplify we have the following comparative chart to help us clarify that these ideas I love y'all I am not gonna read all of this but it can be found on page eighty five and um actually you know what I feel like at least maybe with this piece but maybe I'll just um like scan the charts and stuff like that and then when I upload this to um YouTube and um and my website maybe I'll just like add them on so this way y'all can at least see it uh in general so uh but essentially he says twenty-five hundred BCE is the pyramids then you got go into the pyramid texts and the concept of the noon then the idea of the soul after that and so on and so forth and then on the other side he's giving like another um by theme he's saying well this is when it happened in Kemet but this is when it happened over in Greece so when I do get to scan it now y'all know I guess what you're looking for so I'mma finish this section and then we'll be done for today so fails is the first and he literally does this is the first to have done this or that in Greece the exploration of the constitution of the universe from a unique substance uh conception of immortality and the changing nature in the human soul uh but fails was not the first to have done this in the world because he went to Kemet um so one can therefore see that Greek philosophy and sciences originally came from Kemet I kinda like even though I'm like making fun of it being redundant I I see now like how why it's so redundant because he's literally taking it piece by piece by piece and saying yeah all of this you said Greeks did this boom this is why and this is why and bec- he's using a lot of the same sources to drill that point home now I see why he wrote it the way he wrote it makes sense still annoying but makes sense so uh we are on page eighty six that's where we're going to end today so I'm like did we get close to being done with this chapter not really so we're stopping on page eighty six chapter two and that's an appendix on page one oh one so I know for sure we gonna be done with this chapter and uh no lie the first two chapters like once I'm like let me keep my finger in there but pretty much like that's all we have read and those are only two chapters but then that's two chapters right there so it's like it's it's just crazy to me but it's okay so unti who um so yeah we're ending on page eighty six hopefully next week we'll get to chapter three and then I feel like maybe in another two weeks um we should be finished so that being said again as I've said often if you have any suggestions or books that y'all would like to go over for study session please let me know the general rule is I try to keep it to smaller books like this so that we can read more material um and yeah that's it so um before I give my final goodbye um next Wednesday um I am going to be on live and I'm going to be on with a shopper um her name is Judith but um she goes by rock collage on Instagram and we are going to be on and just talking about or having like a casual conversation about um just different no-no's or blunders or just experiences people might have when they're new to exercising this new spiritual living uh and just you know going to anybody about readings or spiritual tools and stuff like that so we're really gonna kinda get into the no-no's and kinda like you know things to look for uh so if any of you all would like to join us uh on this conversation uh or just listen in on the conversation we will be on both uh this channel and a rock collage talking and um drinking some tea and hanging out so feel free to join us it's at seven PM Eastern Standard Time so um and I definitely will be posting a flyer for that later so until next week do our for coming the hem for coming I always appreciate y'all coming listening hanging chatting or just listening um and so I leave you with Lord have mercy oh my god I said it so fast give yourself today give yourself to the natural daily keep yourself to natural daily and may tomorrow be as today share me a matap y'all